Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, February 24th, 2025 at 7:12. I would like to also state that this meeting has started later than usual due to the public information session on the I-195 Ocean Park Road feasibility study. A recording of the public info session will be posted on the city's website tomorrow, and we appreciate everyone's engagement on that topic this evening. I would like to make note that all members of the council are present this evening with the exception of Counselor Hewitt, who has been excused, and City Administrator Bohenko. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice alone.
Okay, item number four this evening, there is no general. Item five is committee correspondence to council. Are there any council members wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Item number six this evening is public comment. If you wish to address the council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes. Okay, not seeing any members of the public seeking recognition. Moving on to item seven, and that is the approval of the minutes for February 10th, 2025, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards, any discussion on the minutes? Okay, not seeing any, roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes passes 6-0. Okay, that now takes us to item nine this evening, action items. And that is one reading, and that is the confirmation of the, oh, I'm sorry, the consent items, item eight. That is the council schedule for an additional meeting to be added on March 24th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston, any discussion on the consent item? Okay, not seeing any, roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to approve the consent item passes 6-0. Now moving on to item nine, and that is the action item. And that is one reading of the city administrator's appointment of Leah Racine, Esquire of Drummond-Woodsom, as the Saco's new city solicitor, and that is Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As in accordance with Section 5.06 of the city charter and 4.24 of the city code, the city of Saco recommends appointing Leah Ratchan, Esquire of Drummond-Woodsom, as Saco City Solicitor effective March 3rd, 2025. As a result of Tim Murphy's retiring as city solicitor, City Administrator Bohenko has appointed Attorney Leah Ratchan from the law firm of Drummond-Woodsom as Saco City Solicitor. Attorney Ratchan and the firm of Drummond-Woodsom have a tremendous amount of experience in representing municipalities, counties, water and sewer districts, municipal entities, school districts, and state and regional development authorities. Therefore, I am recommending the city council's confirmation on her appointment. Be it ordered that the city council confirm the appointment of Leah Ratchan, Esquire of Drummond-Woodsom, as Saco City Solicitor, commencing on March 3rd, 2025. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Gunn, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Counselor Hatch, any discussion or comment? Okay, roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0, and we do have Leah with us this evening, if you would like to come up and maybe welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors. It's a true pleasure and privilege to be here, and I look forward tremendously to working with you and being of whatever assistance I can provide, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, and welcome.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving on to item B, and that is a public hearing, renewal application for special entertainment permit for the Biddeford Saco Country Club, and that is Counselor Berman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Biddeford Saco Country Club has applied for the renewal of their special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment Section 93-2. The clerk has also checked with code enforcement, finance, fire, and police departments, and there are no concerns. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion has been made to open the public hearing by Counselor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn? Roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing passes 6-0. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak, please step forward to this podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the council. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition, Counselor Berman?
I move to close the public hearing, and be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by the Biddeford Saco Country Club for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston? Any discussion on the item? Okay, roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, that now takes us to item 10, and that is new business this evening, and that is for the fiscal year 2026 curbside solid waste collection contract extension. City Administrator?
Yes, I'd like to have interim Public Works Director Travis Moore come forward and speak to this issue. It's a five-year extension on our contract, and he'll explain some of the salient points to the extension.
Good evening. So, as the administrator said, this is a five-year extension, 5% each year. This still keeps with the two routes, the two trucks, nothing changes there. Depending on any growth within that time period, that's all covered under this. We have a longstanding relationship with Casella, formerly known as Pine Tree Waste. They've been doing our curbside collection for many years. They do have, they included in this proposal, the app for the city, so they'll bring forward an app that residents can use. It's kind of like the EcoMain Recipedia. They'll put in an item, and it'll tell them where they can dispose of it. If they put something that we collect at the transfer station, it'll give them that with the contact info, hours, all that type, that's included in this. And then there's some other options that we can look at as well down the road if we want. They have what's called a food cycler. You take your compost, it's a little countertop unit, it dehydrates it, grinds it up almost like coffee grinds. They offer, you know, that to the residents as like a monthly, you know, subscription that, you know, we could help facilitate down the road if we're interested in, so.
Thank you, any questions for Director Moore? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'm just curious, given the long-term nature of this relationship, how often do we go out for bid for services like this? And how competitive is this compared to what we would get if we did an open bid? And how do we know? How do we make that determination?
That's always a tough question. We've had, like I said, we've been using them. I want to say it was back like 2008 maybe that we went out to bid. It has been, it has been a long time. I think the percentage increases that they've proposed seem like they're right in, you know, the market rate, so to speak, but that is something that we can certainly, you know, look at.
If I might. Yes. In many communities I've worked in have similar type of arrangements. Going out to bid, typically, you probably, depending if you even get a bid, would be very difficult to try to have a more robust type of process. You only have a few involved. The real major thing in this is the tipping fee. And the tipping fee, and I can let Travis talk a little bit about that, but the tipping fee is the key, and that's really not going to change, even if we went out to bid. So the collection is really where you're at, and given what I've seen is it's pretty much in line with other areas. So Travis, maybe talk about the tipping fee and what percentage of the cost that is.
Yeah, so the tipping fee is what we pay at EcoMain when Casella drops our waste off there, we pay by the ton, it's $105 a ton. That goes up each year based on the CPI index. We're in a contract with EcoMain through 2027. We've been in talks with EcoMain on, you know, options they had to extend that. The other thing that I'd just like to point out too is, you know, they're located right in Elotchard, they have a facility there that we can, we can drop off some of our, you know, construction demo cans and stuff that we have at the transfer station. So, you know, the convenience is good as well, and also their facility in Scarborough, where they, you know, run their trucks out of, you know, they definitely have plenty of spare trucks. If a truck goes down, usually, you know, they're able to get, get up, that day's collection may be delayed by hours, but it's not delayed by days, so, you know, we definitely have a good, good working relationship.
And from, excuse me, if I might, and from a budgeting standpoint, this is something that I think is advantageous to the city. We have that in our budget to know exactly what we're going to be facing over the next few years, which is a major part of the Public Works Department's budget. And as you can see and have read, the cost of staffing and equipment is all going up, if not more than 5%. So I think they want to keep our business. I think this is probably in the best interest of the city right now to proceed with this contract.
I think another good thing to point out too is that over these five years, depending on the community growth, they're, they're still sticking with those, with those two trucks. When the city gets to a point where they got to bring another truck on to keep up, that's where I think we're going to see, you know, a larger growth. So right now, they're still comfortable with the, with the two trucks, even based on the rate of growth that we had over the last three years. I did reach out to them and ask them about a three-year extension versus a five, and they said that they would certainly do that, but the rates would definitely be increased from the five.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. That was going to be my question, because my experience in the past had been three-year contracts, but it seems like, you know, they kind of said, hey, take the five and we'll keep the rate low. But to answer Counselor Berman's question, just from my experience here through the years, this has come up in the past, like, hey, should we go out? From my recollection, there's maybe one other provider that might do this. I don't know if they're capable of providing the same level of service for a municipality the size of Saco, and as has been stated, the relationship, for the most part, has been pretty good. I think they're responsive. That's my own personal experience, when I've had issues, they seem to be responsive. So it did give me pause to see five years, but, and I, and I know there's more companies coming into the state of Maine, and I know waste management is certainly starting to trickle in. So, you know, five years from now, I probably think it would potentially make sense to review this and see what is out there, but overall, I'm supportive of it.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Hatch?
I had a couple of questions, one of them's been answered, and I wanted to share Counselor Berman's sort of conceptual thought about multiple proposals, but I, you gave me the answer I thought I was going to get, there isn't really a lot of competition out there. And I would also agree that if you're happy with a relationship, it's probably a good idea to stick with it. And I too can attest to issues that I've had in my ward from constituents that have been resolved very, very favorably, so I think the relationship is, is good both ways. I am very intrigued by this app, so I think, you know, and I'm the eternal optimist, so I'm thinking, if I got, if I have the app now and I have a problem, I don't have to call you, I can just go on the app and, and let them know what my question is. So I think that's a very interesting feature here that will, the only way I know if the collection schedule has changed is I look out my window and see if my neighbors put their cans out. My daughter's pretty much on top of that, she lives across the street, so if her cans are out, I'm putting mine out. But I appreciate the five years, I think, with a good relationship, and to Counselor Johnston's point, we may have choices the next time we, we come up for renewal, and maybe we look at them and maybe we're still happy, so, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, councilors, that will come back to us at a future meeting. Okay, that now takes us to item 11, and that is the administrative update, City Administrator Bohenko?
Your Honor, I'd like to just take a moment to go through the budget timeline that I've outlined in the administrator's report. Right now, we're in the process of working with all the departments to review their individual budgets. We're getting a lot of information in from outside entities as well, so we're working on that to put together a budget for fiscal year '26. School presentation to council on their fiscal '26 budget will take place on March 17th. FY '26 school board budget to city council for review and feedback. The city council also joined the board, school board for joint meeting to review the school board budget and discuss any outstanding items. Presentation to the city council, the city administrator will present an overview of the FY '26 budget on March 24th, the date that you have approved tonight, and I will be going over the entire general fund side of the budget for the city. Departmental presentations, you'll see they're outlined here, and this will also be online for people to look at. They will all occur in April, and so I've been putting together their presentation dates, I'm trying to mix them up so they don't have too many, you know, you don't have Public Works and Police on the same night, but I'll try to do is mix them up with larger departments, smaller departments, and we'll, so that council has the opportunity to ask any questions that they may have. So then we'll have the council budget workshop, a public hearing on May 5th, when the council reviews the budget, approval of motions and workshops and any amendments. This is also the night for the scheduled public hearing on the capital plan and the municipal budget. We hope to have the council approval acted on at the May 12th, 2025 meeting, municipal budget, capital plan, water resource, enterprise fund budget, school budget, tax due dates, and other related items. So that's the schedule right now, so April will be a busy month relative to reviewing city budgets. The other item I have is winter storm update. I asked the interim director to put this together, you know, Public Works has experienced an active weather pattern of storm activity this past week. The last two storms resulted in a total of 18 to 20 inches of snow. The Public Works crews averaged about 15 hours, the storm of February 13th, and 26 hours on the storm of February 16th and 17th. During these storms, crew was split into shifts at times to allow our crews to get needed rest and breaks and space, spaced out coverage during the commute hours. Our fleet experienced some breakdowns that consisted of two sidewalk machines, and I think that's the important one to look at. That's where I think we had a little bit of a concern in that area with our machine breakdowns. The other thing about those machines is that parts are hard to get there, they're backordered, you know, national, it's a national issue. So we had, we had the rent one, which we were able to get, and, and we kept trying to continue to work on our sidewalks. I know there's, there were two people that we had on injury leave, so that slowed things down a little bit. Winter materials have been ordered to replenish our sand and salt stockpiles to prepare for additional storms. Public work is scheduled with downtown snow removal Thursday, and that happened last week, and it looks pretty good down there. So I just wanted to kind, I wanted to bring this up and explain a little bit about the sidewalks, the work concerns on some of the sidewalk issues. We did have some challenges in that area, but we're trying, and I know that the director's looking to try to make sure that we, we stay ahead of the issue on that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the city administrator?
I just wanted to mention that next week, we'll have a workshop on the Ferry Road Culver Crossing, and the interim director will be presenting at that. Okay? That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 12, that is the council discussion and comment. Any councilors wishing to speak? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. We got several items, one of which I missed during the new city solicitor item, but it's fine because it's not necessarily related, but I just wanted to recognize Attorney Murphy, for his 30-plus years of service to the city, my math is correct, I think he ultimately served on the behalf of five administrators, seven mayors, and 30-plus city councilors. And I know that for him personally, it certainly was a privilege for him to have served in, you know, the town he grew up in, the community he worked in and raised the family in, so I was thinking about this the other day, and I seriously doubt that when my father was seeking a new city attorney back in '93, '94 period, that he anticipated that, you know, Tim would go on to be the longest-serving solicitor. So I just wanted- So I just wanted to publicly recognize on behalf of myself, but I'm, I'm sure it's on, on behalf of this council and all councils that, you know, had him serve for him or for the city. So I just wanted to say that. And then I won't belabor this too much, because the administrator just touched upon snow removal. And the issue I understand is certainly issues we've had. But it's sidewalk, snow removal in downtown has been an issue for a decade plus that I've been here. It's by far one of the biggest issues that I face from constituents. You got to remember that there's a lot of people with mobility issues in the downtown. Our, our zoning really has designated elderly housing down this way. And of course, you don't have to be elderly to have mobility issues. So I, I see those challenges on, on the regular. And I understand we have staffing issues and equipment issues. But I will say, almost a decade now, 2017, when we first were creating the downtown TIF district, when I sat with the economic development director at the time and city administrator, one of the things I was emphasizing was like a dedicated equipment and staffing for the downtown, which ultimately got into that development plan. It just has never been funded. So in past years, when we're returning TIF dollars back to the general fund, you know, this is one of those areas that I certainly would like to at least have the conversation about. And again, I get it, finding somebody to might, to, to drive that plow might be a challenge, but having a third sidewalk plow and, and, you know, I, I, I see the challenge oftentimes while the sidewalks get plowed. They do a relatively good job. It's certainly a challenge with how some of the streets are. They really could use it twice. And I can provide plenty of examples of that. But they just don't have the, the equipment or the time to do that and all the other things. So just bring it up now, knowing that we're going into the budget cycle. And I will be anticipating that it is something I will be requesting.
If I might just follow up on that, if I can. I talked to interim director, and one of the things we talked about was maybe some pre-treatment on those sidewalks. I watch those sidewalks every day, and I understand some of the issues. I think pre-treatment, but that's expensive, but that's something we can do. And maybe we, we've talked about it, and I think if we can lay down some pre-treatment on those sidewalks, I think it might help out, you know, to, so that we don't have the same, you know, the, the refreezing.
Yeah, that's the problem right now.
Because if you walk over to where the mills are, near the transportation center, their sidewalks are pretty clear. And I noticed that they did pre-treatment. So that's something I think we can look at. And I'll talk to the interim director about that. We had a brief conversation, but I think that's something we could look at, and something we could maybe get on. I don't know. Travis, any thoughts on that at all?
And I know one of the issues with our downtown Beach Street, Elm Street, is having the brick sidewalks. Also, it's not a regular.
But again, pre-treatment.
Yeah. I was going to mention that, you know, that is one struggle that we have with the downtown area being the brick sidewalk, is the calcium certainly isn't good for the bricks. It'll definitely deteriorate them faster. The other, I, I agree with Counselor Johnston that, you know, having an extra, you know, set or two of hands and stuff would certainly help. The other, the other challenge is just those sidewalk machines have a hopper that's about the size of this podium. So it's manually shoveling, you know, from a one ton into that to get the material. So there's equipment out there to do, you know, this type of thing. It's just going to take some research and figure out, you know, how, how the best way to do it.
Yeah, and again, we'll, we'll talk about it, but I just want to make sure that I let the council know and just respond to you on that.
Yeah, and again, I'm not, I didn't want to be misconstrued as criticism, because again, I, I watch it. I watch, you know, oftentimes the person on the sidewalk plow usually is the youngest guy on the totem pole. And I've watched them struggle because of, again, the, the way the sidewalks are shaped, the geometry of it. And I, I've even gone out and come give some suggestions. But, you know, it's a cycle, and I'm just saying that from my perspective, I'm, I'm certainly more than willing to.
It's on our radar.
Support financially.
It's on our radar, and we'll hope to do better with the downtown.
Well, thank you. And then lastly, and again, I don't want to labor on this one, because this is totally out of the administrator's control. But, you know, we were here last year when I discussed the issue of our auditing firm not delivering a timely audit to us. And we've now, once again, moved almost entirely through the month of, of February, which is not keeping in line with chapter 15, which requires that whatever surplus there may be, be brought to council for council to determine the expenditure. Thinking back to when this came about many years ago, the idea here was, again, to empower council to make that determination on those funds in the current budget cycle, not used in, and technically, it's two years removed from when the surplus would occur, if we were to budget it in FY '27, I guess we were on now. So I'm just, I guess advocating again for RFQ or something. I know there's other auditing firms. I'm not saying that they necessarily would want to take us on, but I don't understand how we have something that's codified, and other municipalities don't have that same standard, but we do. And again, we answer to, you know, code and charter. We should be ensuring that we're keeping in line with it. If that means they're not able to perform that service, then it's time to find somebody else. I would argue that I think after 30-plus years, it's probably time we at least inquire about other auditing agencies. So I just wanted to say that again, because we were supposed to have that by January.
Yeah, if I might, Your Honor?
Yes, please.
So I agree with you, Counselor. One of the things that I'm on the list, sir, for the city managers, town managers in, in Maine, and what came across my desk was the number of communities that, quite frankly, not only did they get it late in the year, but some of them went into the next fiscal year before they got them. So it's, it's problematic throughout municipal government that this is happening. The other thing that happened that I found out the other day, which is positive for us in terms of the school department, but the school department hired the, the in-charge, or the, the person that coordinates our audit as their new finance person. So that person had to stop working on the audit because of conflicts. And, and we've been hounding the heck out of them. But I don't disagree with going out and looking. The one thing I would caution is, kind of be careful what you ask for, because this whole industry right now for municipal auditing is in a, is in a really difficult place. But one thing I will tell you is, we will provide the fund balance. I mean, it won't, it'll be an unaudited fund balance at any rate, but it will be pretty darn close to what the audit comes out with. So we could provide, and we will provide, an audited number that we have for the end of the fiscal year, so that you can comply, as you've indicated, with the ordinance that we have on use of fund balance. But yeah, I agree totally with you, but it's unfortunately, there's some communities, believe it or not, that are behind two years.
I know. They haven't closed their books, but.
It's, and, and it's not only that, but the, the auditors have not been able to get those. So it's, it's, you know, even a struggle to get an accountant, to hire an accountant is very difficult now. So, but we will have, for your budgeting purposes, we will have an unaudited fund balance. And we will be, I think we should be very tight on that, plus or minus a little bit, but I think you'll stay within those ranges. So yeah, that's something we've noted. We, we are constantly hounding them. I have a phone call into the partner in charge, and we'll be working on it. But again, congratulations to the school department for getting something very capable. Too bad for us that we have to, you know, lose that, that person in our audit process. But we'll do our best.
Thank you.
Anything else, Counselor Johnston?
That is all.
Anyone else? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a couple of quick points. One was brought to my, I guess refreshed my memory, based on the conversation we're having earlier about the traffic study and whatnot. As I've been contacted by constituents over the winter time about many of the, the traffic speeding issues that we've talked about quite a bit throughout town. And I was thinking that, well, we are going to go into budget season, though. We will have, you know, time for workshops coming up soon, whether it's during the budget season or when things slow down during the summertime. I think it would be prudent for us to have as a workshop item, the issue from the council perspective of whether or not raised speed tables would be a prudent measure to implement in town. And the reason I bring it up is essentially, I know that the former Public Works Director, now town manager of Cape Elizabeth, was not enthusiastic about it. However, as someone who was, you know, the planning board liaison, and then have sat in on planning of planning boards since then, I have made note that having raised speed tables as sort of a condition of approval has been on, has been out there for some developments that have come before planning boards. So it's not as if the city of Saco is allergic to the idea of speed tables. I know they can be impediment to winter, like snow removal equipment and things of that nature. That being said, I do know that they have been utilized in sort of the cut-through streets in Portland. And they're not, some of them aren't, some ones I, I am familiar with are permanent ones. So I think it would be prudent to revisit that in a workshop form and to see how that would work for the city of Saco if we were really serious about this. Because we've talked about, and I know plenty of people have come in front of the city with legitimate and oftentimes heartbreaking stories about how the poor behavior of a lot of folks these days, driving in terms of excessive speed, has really become an unfortunate aspect of our daily lives in the city of Saco. And I really think that we really should start trying to be a little more proactive about some impediments that we can do, you know, ones that we don't have to break the bank on, but I think ones that are low-hanging fruit. I think we should at least have the conversation about it, especially as we, again, it's warmer, we get the, the summer traffic on top of the locals. I think it would be something worth looking at. So that point there. And my second point is, of course, we were all, we were all made aware of the departure of the city manager across the river in Biddeford. I know, I do not know what the timetable is for the Biddeford City Council to go into the hiring process of a new city manager. However, under the circumstances, I think this would be a wonderful opportunity for the mayors and city managers, perhaps get together to perhaps restart any and all cross-river communications when it comes to actual substantive things that we can work together on. I know that it's, it's the joke these days, what is happening with federal funding? So anything that we can do regionally, whether it's a, you know, a by-relationship between the two of us, whether we're in contact with GP Cog, regional authorities, et cetera, or just cross-cooperation between us ourselves, I think the opportunity now with a new city manager, or in this case, an acting city manager in, across Biddeford, might be a prudent chance for us to jumpstart that relationship. So therefore, when Biddeford does bring in a new permanent city manager, perhaps relations are, shall we say, a little bit more fruitful than they have been in recent, well, years. And I just figured out bringing those points up. Thank you, Your Honor.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Gunn. And yes, we can look at a workshop and possibly bring in, well, definitely bring in Director Moore, as well as maybe some of the traffic safety, because that has been an item of topic, long as I've known. And we actually have been, we do have our joint committee, where the city manager, myself, and Counselor Hatch, and now currently Counselor Parks, we do, we have been meeting with Biddeford on a bimonthly basis. We actually have a meeting tomorrow. So we have been in communication. It's been going well. We will meet the acting interim manager, Finney, tomorrow, and then be able to start on a fresh path with him. Okay, anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. That takes us to item 13, and that is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. We'll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
No.
Always one. Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-1. To adjourn at 7:49. And thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.